Come to order the city council meeting of the city of Eldridge, Iowa for Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Roll call.
You can do swearing house on the roll call.
Here, present.
Blackwell.
Present.
Campbell.
Present.
Docree.
Present.
Yossi.
Present.
And Dan is sick. All right, we're gonna do the ceremonial swearing in.
Be angel one at a time or?
Well, I can do it either way, but I'll have to stand by the flag. Yep, that's fine.
You guys can come up, take pictures, video, if you want to come up and picture or video.
I'll get the state your name part. I.
Brian Yossi.
Scott Campbell.
Figure out what I wrote.
Do some more swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do some more swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa. And I will faithfully and partially. Faithfully and partially. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. To discharge all the duties of the office of the council of the city of Eldridge, Iowa. With the job of duties of the council of the city of Iowa. As now. Congratulations. Thank you. West Platte Legion. My plaid allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the regalia for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'm a.
Motion by Docree, second by Blackwell to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays. Ayes have it. Number four, public comment. Uh, last year, we adopted Robert's rules. So just to remind everybody to allow everybody three minutes to say what they'd like to. So is there anybody who'd like to say anything in public comment that's not on the agenda tonight?
Yes, sir.
You state your name, please.
Uh, Bernie Peters. I live on North Fourth Street in Eldridge. Uh, I'd like to take my three minutes to uh thank Mayor Kane, former Mayor O'Boyle, and all the other mayors I've worked under. I'd also like to thank uh all the council members that I've worked with over the years, present and uh not on the council anymore. Uh, I would also like to uh thank and congratulate our still fairly new city administrator and city clerk and Jeff, who has done a great job for us and will continue to do so. Like to thank Ray Nice and all the other department heads for their service over the years to Eldridge. And acting chief uh for all the work the police department has put in and done for things. Uh, it's been a great sixteen years of service, very mixed uh feelings about not running again, but when I saw the slate of candidates, um I had confidence in the citizens of Eldridge like I've always had. And uh they, they came through, made a good decision. I think we got a great council coming ahead. I think we've got a lot of past issues uh behind. And uh I look forward to seeing what these group of people uh will do and can do if they work together. So uh thank you so much and for our new council members. Um, I appreciate your willing to serve and uh you, you have great people to work with. And I'm, I'm happy for the city of Eldridge.
Thank you, Bernie.
Whatever.
I'll say I'm for it, sir.
Really good sport. Um, had a family funeral today, um got relatives staying, um so I don't even have to make up a lame excuse to leave early.
Thank you again.
No, I'm thanking you.
Is there anybody else?
Good luck, Eldridge. Great group of people working, the city employees, all departments. We got great people. Uh, nothing else in sixteen years I learned, this is on my wife's three minutes. I will never take garbage pickup, uh flushing the toilet, little things like that for granted again. Um, you know, it takes community to raise a child and it takes community throughout the city. And we have a good city, we have a good community, and keep going, everyone.
Thank you, thanks, Bernie. Is there anybody else in public?
There's two overs in forty-five seconds. Two minutes.
All right. Number five. A consideration to approve the city council minutes from the December eighteenth meeting.
Wasn't present for that meeting, but I, I make a motion if there's none made.
I'll second his motion for approval.
All right. Motion by Blackwell, second by Docree to approve the city council minutes from the December eighteenth minute. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Ayes have it. Five B, consideration to approve the special council sitting, city council minutes from the December twentieth meeting.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
You're here a second.
Second.
Motion by Blackwell, second by Docree to approve the special city council minutes from December twentieth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay, ayes have it. Consideration to approve the bills payable. Does anybody have any questions on the bills payable this evening?
I had a couple of that, just gonna check them off for me. I'm just with the injury to the canine. Make sure that our insurance coverage is either paid or to uh turn it down to get payment.
It's reimbursed.
Yeah, they paid ninety percent, we paid ten percent. Yep.
But they'll reimburse us, go to check now, we have like thirty-three hundred bucks.
That was, yeah, that's what we, that's what we're obligated to pay. They already reimbursed nine thousand, I think. Yep.
Scott, Ryan, do you have any question?
Nay.
Okay. Looking for motion to approve as presented.
I made a motion to approve bills. Second.
Motion by Campbell, second by Docree. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay, ayes have it. Say five D, proclamation for human trafficking. Whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the deniable right of freedom and they added the thirteenth amendment of the constitution, make a slavery illegal. And whereas slavery within the United States today is most often found in the form of forced labor and sex trafficking, which weakens our social fabric, increases violence, organized crime, and debases our humanity. And whereas this is the heinous crime which is found within our own community. And whereas the Rotary Club of North Scott is working to abolish all forms of human trafficking through education, prevention, volunteerism, advocacy, and collaboration. Where, whereas even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolated nature and the misunderstanding of its definition and the lack of awareness about its indicators. And whereas increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with this increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions, can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors as well as help diminish the number of future victims. And whereas every business, community organization, faith community, family, individuals can make a difference by choosing products that are not made by forced labor, by working to protect our young from people from sexual exploitation, by addressing the problem of internet sex trafficking, sex trafficking and pornography, and by becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. And now therefore, I Frank King, Mayor of the city of Eldridge, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of January two thousand twenty-four as slavery and human trafficking prevention month and encourage all of our citizens to become more informed of this growing problem, to be vigilant and report suspicious activity and to work towards solutions to end trafficking in all its forms in our community. If you see something that doesn't look right, take action and call the National Human Trafficking Hotline at eight 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 three seven three seven eight eight eight. For more information and resource about trafficking in Iowa, go to the Network Against Human Trafficking and Slavery at the website of www dot iowanht dot org. Like to present this proclamation. Would like to present this proclamation from the city of Eldridge to youth individuals for human trafficking for the month of January two thousand twenty-four. Thank you.
We're gonna get all the givers, right, so I can see you too.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, I know this will be on our video. Can we put this proclamation on our city Facebook page? In case anybody can see this, because it is valuable information. If there's an issue with the phone number.
Jeff, hook that up and do that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it.
You can also go on that, that website, I believe, but state had to separate one to the rentals and associated with this as well, where you can look, if you're staying within the state of Iowa. A lot of the states will have it as well. You can look at that hotel, seeing the staff has been trained properly to recognize any sex trafficking that might be going on, any type of exploitation. So I just encourage you to do that, thinking about traveling, staying. Look ahead of time at the website to ensure that that hotel has been trained fully. If you're not possibly supporting, you know, this type of exploitation that's going on.
Five B, consideration approving the city appointments for two thousand and twenty-four. The appointments are as follows. For the mayor pro town, Dan Collins. For the fire chief, Keith Snacklaw. The city administrator, Nevada Lemke. The assistant city administrator and zoning enforcement official, Jeff Martins. The city clerk, Martha Mieto. Director of Public Works, Facilities, Parks, Arbors and Streets, Ryan Wessel. Chief billing official for building HVAC plumbing electrical, Ray Nice. Assistant billing official for building HVAC plumbing electrical is Mike Anderson. The city attorney, that's to be determined, we have four application for that right now. Scott County Sheriff's Management, Dan Collins. The city official depositors maximum, we will get to that on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one. For the Davenport Air Commission Board, I Frank King, the mayor. The as a members, the utility board will be Ryan Yossi. Community Center Board will be Dan Collins. The board will be Scott Campbell. Funding Zoning Commission and Board of Adjustment, Ryan Docree. And the economic, economic development advisory board will be Adrian Blackwell and Brian Docree as alternate. On the city council committees, on finance investment will be Brian Docree and Dan Collins. On personnel committee will be Dan Collins and Scott Campbell. For public safety will be Dan Collins, Ryan Yossi. For public works will be Ryan Yossi and Adrian Blackwell.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointments with a note that we're gonna have further discussions in the future on board master committee, but hold.
And that's the next meeting.
I've prepared that motion.
Motion by Docree, second by Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay, ayes have it. Under old business, over six A, we have consideration, the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash one, amending the flood plain zoning maps. Jeff, can I call on you real quick?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Um, we're revisiting this from a couple of months ago. Um, we did reexamine it, myself and the city engineer and the building official. And we determined the maps are indeed, as you know, said, and no changes were made within the city limits of Eldridge. Some of these maps just have a very, very small portion of Eldridge on in the corner. Uh, the reason we're doing this is they changed the names of some of the maps. They changed the letter from G to H, I don't remember, H to G. Um, and so we have to readapt them so they're listed in our ordinance uh because they are the official maps come April eleventh. So we need to readapt those and there is a few minor changes they made in the uh actual model ordinance um for flood plains that was changed. And then all of that is uh listed for you in the ordinance. But if you have any specific questions, I'll be able to answer them for you.
I ask mine part of the meeting. Right, there's a lot that maintains water and sewer lines, one of the, of the V to F.
Yeah.
I, I don't understand that, other than the clause in there, it says, or water, Teddy.
And typically they'll add the word where feasible. We'll see how that works out long term.
I mean, that's kind of challenging. I talked to Jeff too, so everybody knows about the maps. I couldn't understand why we're approving some maps. Uh, clearly there's no flood plain in those maps in the city of Eldridge. It was a little tip of the map. Eldridge corporate limits. Uh, the last thing before we read it, right? Under section two, um kind of the description, one, two, three, fourth line down. Uh, Scott County needs another T on this.
Sure does.
Any other questions or corrections? I would read the ordinance, ordinance two thousand point four dash one and ordinance amending title D, chapter three of the flood plain, city code making following changes, pending all ordinance, it's a resolution, conflict disorders providing for an effective date. If there's any other questions, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dashes zero one. I'll second that as the first reading.
Okay. Roll call.
Docree.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Yossi.
Aye.
Blackwell.
Aye.
Six B, consideration approval to draft a new ordinance for smoke shop businesses. Resent into the planning and zoning commission. Follow the city councils. Jeff, can I call on you this?
Uh, sure. Um, thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to get the right spot here. Uh, so in October and November, uh we discussed this issue a little bit. Um, uh, since, since the time that originally came up, I have had some correspondence with our legal counsel on the issue. And it does seem that there are legal ways that we can go about um restricting smoke shop type businesses. Uh, so what I'm looking for tonight is just a consensus and approval to move forward with that if, if that is the interest of the council.
I'm not opposed if I can review the legal angle of it. I don't want to get us into another potential lawsuit, potential winding businesses to our community.
Yep.
I thought until we, and probably all council members too, we can understand, you know, their logic. Um, I'm not opposed, but I need to understand that portion. Would agree. I trust you and Jeff with your work on this and expertise and work with all the law counsel that the right decision would be made, though there was some concerns regarding residents of Eldridge with those who brought before me and represent the city of Eldridge regarding type of shop, type of establishment, along with any others that we had. So I think it's good to move over with this, see what, what can be done. It's good, I keep it posted. Thank you, thank you for your work, appreciate it.
So that, motion by Brian, a second by Brian. Sure. Okay. Motion by Docree, second by Yossi. All those in favor of approving to draft a new ordinance for smoke shop.
Aye.
Nay, ayes have it. Six C, discussion and consideration improving the purchase of audio system for the city council. Um, I talked to Jeff about this after talking to some of the citizens of Eldridge. And uh Jeff put a thing in your packet. Um, this has been discussed at some other time uh for the community center here. And when Jeff talked to um the people that do the installing and stuff, they went over everything, we're done. As you can see in the packet, um if we were, some of the stuff in here is an older system, so it requires. So to get the converter with eight wireless microphones and the necessary equipment to work with what's in this room and our owl. And keep in mind, it was for a used converter, would be approximately ten thousand dollars. If we wanted to go with completely new system and redo everything in this room, it would be a cost of approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. I've also talked to Jeff after this document was created to see if there's some standalone systems out there for maybe fifteen hundred to three thousand dollar price lines, which would be microphones for us to like a standalone speaker, similar to like a DJ would have. So the rest of the equipment in this room would pick it up, because at some point in the future for the city of Eldridge will be considering a new city hall. And then the new chambers for the city council will be built accordingly to, to new standards. So I would, I would suggest that we maybe see if Jeff can find something a little more reasonable that I hate to use temporary, but we could use for several years until when that day comes around. Instead of ten thousand or twenty-five thousand, I think that's too much for a facility we won't use forever.
Maybe from your North Scott press days or your Mark or Scott. Few years ago when we did the forum, it was set up with a microphone between every two people that they could use that would broadcast out. And in this room right next door, that seemed to work well. Maybe we can look at something like that short term. Instead of having eight individuals put a couple mics on each table.
On per table or whatever.
Because that's exactly what you did, the North Scott pressed it during the forum, two years. Yeah, we had a guy come in, I can't remember, I can go look at. Maybe you can give a chat and see what our possibilities.
Be attached, that'd be, yeah, any help I can get, I'm a great man, you got it.
That sounds good. So we have a uh consensus that see Jeff could come up with a third possibility?
Something less than ten thousand dollars.
Exactly. Okay. All right.
Because I'm worried looking at type of money right now, and you know, still long-term vision, city hall. Better to invest that audio visual equipment within a new building.
Right. Okay. Seven A. Consideration of cruising, proving resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one, naming city depositories. Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-four dash one. Resolution naming city depositories. Whereas the city of Eldridge has funds that must be deposited at financial institutions. And whereas the city elders desires to authorize a variety of financial institutions for the city clerk and city administrator to utilize for these deposits. Now therefore be resolved that the city council, the city of Eldridge, Iowa approves the following list of financial institutions and depositories of the city of Eldridge funds. The city clerk or city administrator is hereby authorized to deposit the city funds in the amounts not to exceed the maximum approved for each respective financial institution set out below. Number one, Wells Fargo of Davenport, Iowa for a two million dollar maximum. Number two, Blacktop Bank in Princeton, Iowa for a two million dollar maximum. Number three, Northwest Bank of Davenport, Iowa for one million dollars. Number four, First Central State Bank from Dewitt, Iowa, ten million dollars. Number five, Dewett Bank and Trust of Dewitt, Iowa for two point five million dollars. Number six, the Bank of the West from Davenport, Iowa for one million dollars. Number seven, First Trust and Savings of Wheatland, Iowa for two million dollars. Number eight, UTEC Credit Union from Dubuque, Iowa for two million dollars. Passed and approved this second day of January two thousand and twenty-four. We're here, motion to approve these.
I just got a question. On the First Central State Bank Dewitt. We're, we raised that at one time because of the proceeds we're gonna get bonds for the YMCA, do we still need that fat line?
I can check and see what it was in two thousand twenty-two.
Before we hit the mic.
Yeah, because in order to receive that, when you're, you're putting money, we got to raise up that increment. Well, at some point, if, if we don't need all that, I'd like to lower that for exposure. So everybody in the crowd knows, we don't have that much money in every bank. Yeah, I'm not close to just clarification on if we need that ten million dollars on, on that bank. And we specifically raised it, received the money for the YMCA.
Was he aligned with the other ones prior to that?
Oh, it was closer to the other ones. Jeff, Ryan, if I had to remember, I'd be thinking it was around five million. Yeah, we had to have, have a higher, because we're in conflict with our resolution, putting all that money. We exceeded our statutory by resolution level. Do I hear a second level? So.
Motion by Docree, second by Yossi to approve resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one, naming depositories with the clarification on the uh maximum limit at First Central State Bank. Roll call.
Blackwell.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Yossi.
Aye.
Docree.
Aye.
Seven B, consideration resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two, approving construction plans for Roco Building Expansion and Public Improvements. Jeff, ready, you want to explain this a little bit, go ahead and forward.
Um, sure, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, just to clarify, at this point, uh, the council's just looking to approve the public improvements, which is the street, uh, they're extending the stub of Sixteenth Avenue South. Um, they've got some storm sewers uh on the west side and a water main on the east that still has to go in yet, probably in the spring. Um, so we're, that's, that's the portion of the plans we're approving tonight because of the public improvements. And the staff is still uh ongoing uh review of the rest of the construction.
And they have most of, all of the street itself in, correct?
Streets in, uh, storm sewer's in, water main is not in. Um, you'll see a, a pretty lengthy list of conditions that the city engineer attached uh about this project. Mostly concerned in specific parts of the water main uh that we wanted to use. But otherwise, uh, standard stuff as far as uh just improving, improving public improvements. Uh, but we're happy to answer questions where you can have any. And I may uh defer to Ray.
Different clarification, we're approving the plans for the improvements, right?
Correct.
Yes, the only question I have when I went through is I don't see longitudinal subdrains on that street, that's part of our city spec now. And the other part was in the typical for the concrete pavement design, it just said road base. I think that should denote what our road base is, either greatest in twelve or fourteen. Earlier than documented, says it has to be by city standards.
Yep.
But some, some would say, well, just be consistent through the plans.
And then as a way of just providing additional information, there are times where, and I'm not in public work, so I'm, I'm speaking as best I can on behalf of public work, based on what I know. But there are times where uh the longitudinal drains will be shown in the individual details, even if they're not specifically called out on the road construction design. And so, because that's not my area of expertise, it, it may be in there. And so, because that's not my area of expertise, it, it may be in there. It's just not where we think it is. It's not there either. Okay.
Or in the typical.
Okay. And then, uh, with regard to, uh, the street design, uh, we do have our, have our standard design sheets for streets. And when we are in a commercial area, uh, there is an increase in the thickness of the concrete and a few other things that are required. And I do know that that has, some of that has been a topic of conversation, and I think that it got resolved. And so like, without being able to show you, I can tell you that I'm pretty sure we got there. Okay?
I'm gonna hold it up. Just clarifying with Greg.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff or Ray about this? Okay. Resolution two thousand twenty four dash two, resolution proving the construction plans for realco building expansion, public improvements. Whereas GTR Eldridge Properties LLC and Townsend Engineering have submitted plans for realco building expansion. And whereas construction plans for public improvement for the project have been submitted and reviewed. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Eldridge hereby approves a construction plan for the realco building expansion, public improvements with attached conditions. Passed and proved the second day of January two thousand and twenty four.
You said those as conditions.
Okay. Great. Do I hear a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty four dash two?
So.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Campbell, second by Doc Green to approve the, um, resolution two thousand twenty four dash two, approving the construction plans for realco buildings, management, public improvements. Roll call.
Yosi.
Aye.
Doc Green.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Blackwell.
Aye.
Seven C, consideration, approving the retirement release agreement with lease chief Joe Sisler. Questions?
Even though I wasn't part of the discussions of the previous council, I'm in regard to this. After talking to Nevada today, I mean, I really do believe it's to the best interest of the city, just behind us as quickly as possible. So I would agree with this agreement.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion by Doc Green, second by Campbell to approve the retirement release agreement for lease chief Joe Sisler. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nate, I have it. Like to thank Joe for twelve years of service to the elders community. And he will be recognized by his team and partners today on January second, two thousand twenty three. Consideration, first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty four dash O two. Mending the city code for stop intersections. Jeff, can I call on you on this again briefly?
Uh, yes, your honor. Uh, these would be the stop signs for Runway first edition, second edition. And, uh, the stop signs that are in, in Ivy Acres and are facing one right now. Um, so that's all that we've got out there that hasn't been updated yet on this page.
These are all brand new ones that aren't been approved yet.
Yep.
Anybody make questions to Jeff on ordinance two thousand twenty four dash two? And ordinance updating stop intersections by amending title B, chapter one, section two point eleven of the Elder City Code, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict with disorder. Providing for an effective date. Do I hear a motion, approval ordinance two thousand twenty four O two on these new stop signs?
We have a motion to approve ordinance, first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty four dash two.
Motion by Doc Green, second by Blackwell to approve the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty four dash two. Roll call.
Campbell.
Aye.
Blackwell.
Aye.
Doc Green.
Aye.
Yosi.
Aye.
Seventy, consideration, first reading of the ordinance two thousand twenty four dash three, amending the city code for parking restrictions on East and Iowa. There were some citizens on East Iowa that, uh, got ahold of me and then shortly thereafter that were getting ahold of Jeff. Um, at some point in time, Jeff provided some information there when the condos were built in two thousand twelve. Uh, the no parking signs on the south side of Iowa were removed, but they were never put back up. So upon the examination of things, the signs were reinstalled. But then, uh, the, the people that thought those condos realized that that was taking away all their ability to have friends and relatives come over for any occasion. Because all they could do is park on their driveway or park somewhere else, but not in front of their own properties. So once that was brought up to Jeff and Ray, they looked at that and then they got with Brian. And then they came up with your recommendation here on, uh, doing away with the no parking on the south side. From Fourth Avenue to a point three hundred thirty feet west. On the country club court. So if anybody has any questions for Jeff on ordinance two thousand twenty four dash three, they're changing the parking restriction for East Iowa.
Jeff, that distance from, from the east end, is that what we came up with last year? Uh, because there's an issue with one business there, everybody parking, bugging up the side of the street.
Yeah. Um, so there's, there's going to be no parking on the north. That's gonna, that's gonna stay. Um, the, the, and that's always been, no parking has been labeled as such. So we're just vacating it on the south up until, um, the other no parking zone ends. Um, but yeah, we had, uh, thought to see how, how Fourth Avenue goes. Um, because we'll have, uh, you know, with the new softball diamond and stuff there. I did have a meeting with the superintendent and, and discuss this and, um, school district's on board with it. Fire department, police department's on board with it. Um, we will have to watch South Fourth Avenue and just kind of see what happens there. Um, because they do have an entrance to some parking down there. And if that starts getting congested, we'll have to. For now, everyone seems of the opinion, just not the one there. It's not necessary.
On this map you provided, we're going to continue to go further east than where the red dashes stop.
Where the, the red dashes are, are the proposed no, no parking vacation.
Okay.
East there just added last year, there are no parking.
Um, this is, no, um.
In east of that, I thought.
There was two, uh, they added seventy feet to it.
Oh, okay.
But it's been no parking for quite a while, but they, they had an issue. That's what Brian was referring to, but that was way to the east and that is still no parking. Yeah, the only thing we're doing is, is the area where it's double, that was been parked.
Basically giving the homeowners and condos the right to park in front of their properties on the south side.
Which they've been doing since two thousand and twelve, because when they bought the condos, they didn't know there was no parking there. Um, because the signs were taken down when they constructed the condos and they were never put back up. So basically in the last twelve years, we had no issues with this. So it doesn't make sense to keep it on both sides of the street. I'm sure at some point, probably because of the buses or something, you know, they, when they had the garage down there. I'm not sure what the reasoning was for having that on both sides of the street, but everyone involved and who emergency services has said that it's not necessary.
All this is just cleaning up our.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty four dash three?
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero three, first reading.
Second.
Motion by Yosi, second by Doc Green to approve the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty four dash three, amended city code for parking restrictions in East Iowa. Roll call.
Yosi.
Aye.
Doc Green.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Blackwell.
Aye.
For eight.
I make a motion for adjournment. I gotta keep my record.
Just one question.
One question.
Yes. So what is the plan moving forward now that they accepted Joe's, um, retirement? Regardless of calling that position.
So we are going to post the opening for a VCH position tomorrow. The opening will, um, be available for applicants for two weeks. I leave the. The nineteenth is the cutoff for turning in, uh, resumes and applications for that position. And then the mayor will have a, uh, applicant, um, interview committee for, for that position. And once that process is final, he'll make a foundation card. Point that.
Okay. And then, vote council, vote.
Since we're on Iowa right now, the last meeting, you know, I talked to Jeff. I'd like to fail to get maybe public work, so maybe take the whole, whole council or just individual meeting in Nevada regarding sidewalks installations on Iowa. With the expansion of neighborhoods there, while resting and softball diamond, so. A lot of kids are walking the street, parents, joggers, maybe stores in the street. I think it's time, even though there is, there's fields there right now to talk to the parking owners and all the city to do something to help subsidize that. So kids have a safe passage back and forth and not walk the street. So if we can, if we can do that, if we can keep that on the forefront, whatever route needs to go, it's just individual, city, public works, committee as a whole. I would like to get sidewalks installed in there, come up after this winter, do it, do it as soon as possible. Right? And also I have, I have another general freshman too. Then, then my last freshman, he called me adjourned. There's numerous cones, street cones on First Street. It looks like there's maybe water or some type of residue.
They corded.
Okay.
They corded to test the thickness of the concrete.
Okay, so that was them. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Kind of the chart, maybe you got a G dot or it's two shards, they got to tear it out.
Okay. Yeah, it's not a water main leak. Yeah, I assumed it was a water main leak also.
确认it's with the, our director. It's not a water main, and because there's four or five cones on.
Yeah, they corded out.
They tested.
Corded.
And they use water to drill it, so that's the issue.
Yep.
Thank you for your attention.
I made a motion already. When the motion made and.
Yeah, I got one more. So before, before we go on to that, on our next scheduled regular council meeting will be January sixteenth.
Usually January sixteenth because of COVID seems the fifteenth.
And. Correct.
Brian, you confirmed you won't be here.
I will not be here on the sixth.
That you've confirmed.
I will not be, right?
So you too.
I should be available.
Ryan, will you be?
I can seventh.
I can be here. They will be okay. And then, um, for next Monday, we had scheduled to have a committee, the whole one to make sure who will be available for that meeting.
Looks like you were gonna be here.
It's going to be posted for five P M on Monday, the eighth. I know we have one council member that cannot attend. Before we post that public meeting, that, that date works.
Five thirty sounds better to me.
Yeah.
Tell me.
Do that.
If possible.
Okay.
Yep.
So you can make it, Adrian?
Yes. Five thirty, please.
Yes. Ryan, you can. Okay.
All right. Well, somebody second my motion for.
Motion by Doc Green, second by Blackwell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned by seven forty.